Monday, April 15th, 2019, of the Town Council. Prayer by Councilor Bosco. Dear Lord, this coming weekend, the Jewish faith celebrates Passover and Christian faith, celebrates Easter. With that in mind, we pray that we will express what these two events stand for by accepting forgiveness while also offering forgiveness, feeling love and sharing love, being accepted and accepting others, serving others and allowing others to serve us. May God bless our town, our state, our nation. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Bosco?
Here.
Councilor Sikala?
Here.
Councilor Crisati?
Here.
Councilor Davis?
Councilor Denny?
Here.
Councilor Kiner?
Here.
Mayor Ludwig?
Here.
Councilor Mueller?
Here.
Councilor Sparazza?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Susak?
Here.
Councilor Ungary?
Here.
You have ten to attend to from that accident.
Moving on to item four, fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, please orderly go to the back of the building. We have an exit in the back. Either go left or right out the door, or to our left, your right, out that door, down the first doors to the left, down the stairs and out into the parking lot. Item number five, minutes of preceding meeting, special meeting, April 15th, 2019. I think we need 19 on that, I think, right?
Yes, 2019.
I mean, we could have had a meeting last year on the same date. So that is a mission, a change right there. Do I have a motion to?
Motion.
By Councilor Denny, seconded by Councilor Crisati. Please make sure we change the date on the agenda to 2019. Any errors, omissions, or deletions on the minutes? Hearing on all those in favor, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? We have nine in favor, zero against. Again, regular meeting, April 15th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve? Councilor Mueller, seconded by Councilor Crisati. Any errors, omissions, deletions? Hearing on by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? We have nine in favor, zero against. Special guest, the Enfield Beautification Adopt a Spot Recognition, recognition, excuse me, so folks who are here to represent Adopt a Spot, please come forward. How you doing? Welcome.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good, thanks.
Hey, bud, how you doing?
So, good evening, Mayor Ludwig and council members. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Enfield Beautification Committee. I'm Debbie Gaskell and I'm here with Roberta Ladd and Darren Ketchel. And we've been involved with others on the committee to strengthen the beautification committee's Adopt a Spot project. For those who may not know, Adopt a Spot's an initiative that supports the ongoing improvement of the physical appearance of the Enfield community. And we are a committee that was originally established as the Keep Enfield Beautiful Committee over 40 years ago. Recently, we've reorganized our Adopt a Spot files, we've compiled an online map of sites, we've confirmed locations, and we've also bridged contact with our participants. And we've come here tonight to recognize our most active Adopt a Spot participants. And I'd like to say, for those who are here in the audience, if you could please come on up to receive a certificate. If not, Roberta has agreed to hand deliver. So with your permission, we'd like to go ahead and do that.
Right ahead, you have the floor. Thank you for hand delivering if they're not here.
This is a pleasant thing.
Our first recognition, we have two recipients at the same location, and I know at least one of them is here this evening. So at the location of South Road and Raffia Road, we'd like to recognize Gary Raffia with cans for kids.
Come on forward, sir.
Also at that location, we have Bill Guzzi with Bill's Landscaping. I'm not sure if anyone is here. I don't believe so, but Roberta will deliver that certificate. Second recognition, representing Easy Pickens Orchard with a site location at Route 190 and Broadbrook Road, we have Brian Callaher.
He's not here.
Okay. Hopefully he's listening. Third recognition, representing the Enfield Garden Club. We have a number of members here tonight. They have multiple locations throughout Enfield, including visible locations on Pearl Street, the Enfield Library, the Route 5 entrance to Enfield from Long Meadow, the Route 190 entrance to Enfield from Summers, and can't forget the Town Hall Water Fountain.
Yes, that was my project. I did it all by myself.
So thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. On behalf of all of us, thank you.
We're very happy. They do above and beyond for our town and have for years and years and years. We wish it was way more recognition.
And we thank you, and we appreciate what you've done for us. We've been partners.
Yes, we have.
Yes, we have. I appreciate it.
Nancy is the president.
And they've been wonderful to us. We appreciate all of your help. And I'm Elsie Vogel.
Oh, yes, you are.
Hi, Mr. Kiner.
For any Adopt a Spot members looking for plants, I can say that the Garden Club is having its biggest sale of the season, May 4th, at the Senior Center. The fourth recognition is the Lutheran Church of Our Redeemer. The site location's at Elm Street and North Street. Linda Yorio.
Okay. This is my friend Suzanne. She is my partner in crime.
Oh, thank you. Now, she does not even live in Enfield, and she carts, she is right near the bank, the United Bank in Enfield. She carts water all by herself across that busy, busy road to do this, and has done it for years.
And representing Smith's Ice Cream on Palumba Drive near Route 190, Charlie Manzone. And we will deliver that certificate to him. So we're excited to have them continue their good work in the town, and we also invite others to do the same. They can make contact with us through the website to adopt a spot. I just talked with someone today who's looking for some formal signage, so hopefully, you know, we'll continue to grow, to beautify the town. And also, we are currently seeking members. We do need to, you know, have our committee grow, and anyone interested, please visit the website. There is a link or contact Town Manager's Office. Love to have you.
Great plug.
Thank you.
Great plug.
Thank you.
Sorry, folks. Debbie, you're not done with something. I got a question. You guys, you got a question?
Roberta, come back.
Just Roberta?
Yeah. Well, no, you can stay too. This is your time, you should have mentioned, because you had a few minutes.
Yes.
For dollars from the council.
We thought it was only supposed to be.
But thank you for coming, too.
It's our pleasure. This is nice. I didn't think we should do that because we.
Roberta? So everybody can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
They can't hear you.
We didn't think we should do that because we wanted it to be completely pleasant, but we are really out of money, so if you could think about us at budget, our budget has been cut for two or three years now, and it's a real handicap, because we could believe you do way more, and our town needs beautifying. And so we really try to take it seriously and make the most of what dollars you do give us, and we're very appreciative of that, but if you could give us more, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, public communications. At this time, would anyone like to speak for the council? Again, we please ask that you refrain from personalities. First time up, you get five minutes. Would anyone like to speak for the council? Anyone going once? Anyone going twice? I declare public communications closed. Moving on to item seven, council communications. Are any councilors? Councilors Sparazza?
I just want to thank the people at the Parent Leadership Academy over at the Stowe School. They asked me last week to go there and talk to the parents a little bit about how the town operates, our budgets and things like that. And it was not only a great staff, but it was so wonderful to see the parents trying to learn a skill set and learn about their community. I think it sets a great example for their kids, and they just wanted to be more informed. And I thank them very much for the invitation.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any other councillor? Councilor Kiner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's one issue that bothers the people in the Houserville section is that vacant gas station on the corner of 190 and Broadbrook Road. It's been an eyesore for years. Up until last year, the area wasn't even paved. Now there's gravel there, and during the summer months, there's a vegetable stand that takes root over there. What I'd like to know is what the status of that gas station is, who owns it, and what is being done to rectify that, what I consider blight. So if we could look into that, Mr. Town Manager, I'd appreciate that. I did come late to the last town council meeting, so I was unable to talk during the council communications, but I've got to say, I did take a tour of the, I always want to say "firmly" because I taught there for so many years, the Enfield Annex. And I've got to say, I was really impressed with the utilization of the building, but there is certainly a lot of under-utilization as well, and I'm sure as time goes on, the council and the, some other committees will be looking into that further. The Enfield Women's Club did their, I think it's their 56th or 57th annual art show a couple of weeks ago at Enfield High School. I want to congratulate them, but in particular, I want to congratulate the students, the Enfield school system. Those of you who were at the, at Enfield High School, you would notice some incredible, incredible artwork. My only wish was that I could have bought some of their artwork, because we have really a lot to be proud of our kids. And that had to be stated. And one further issue, the Lions Club will be holding their annual breakfast on May the 4th, along with the Senior Center having a bake sale. That's on April, that's on, I'm sorry, May the 4th. It's a pancake breakfast. I've got to say, since I make the pancakes, they really are good. You want to come out and taste a few of them, they are good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Bosco?
Through the mayor to the town manager, I was driving down Fletcher Road, and right at the corner of Charnley and Fletcher, there's a lot of silt and buildup around the catch basin that needs to be cleaned up before it gets down into the some. And also, I had a complaint in front of 129 Abbey Road. There was, I guess there was some work done there, and the town right away keeps washing away, and they keep trying to put some dirt in there, and it just keeps washing with the water coming down the road. We could take a look at that and see if we can do something there. It may need a curb or some kind of stabilization, because it really does look pretty bad and our yard's washing. That's it.
Councilor Crisati?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate everybody who received their certificate tonight from the Enfield Beautification Committee. You guys do outstanding work throughout the town, and it is recognized. So congratulations to you and to Debbie Gaskell, Roberta Ladd, and Darren Ketchel for your time and effort into that committee. And we will take a look at your request for monies and that budget. You do a fantastic job for our town, and you deserve to have a little something in your fund. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I did notice that, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, about the transit services, that State Department of Transportation is updating the two fixed routes in town, so I'm pretty pleased to hear that, to get additional stops along the way, especially going to some of the schools. So that's a big plus, so thank you for getting the ball rolling on that. So, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Susak?
I guess the first thing, it's this time of year, the potholes in town, there's been a few brought to my attention. Been driving on Moody Road, mayor has been too. Moody Road's in really bad shape. Will Star Circle is crumbling. I know every year they go out and they pothole patch it, but I guess, you know, there's, I guess what people kind of don't understand is, we did the roads referendum 2015. It's a five-year referendum. When you put a referendum out, you have to list all the roads that are on the referendum. And then you have the, what I call, the additional list that should the referendum come in under budget on anything, and we do have monies available, we can look at these other roads and see if we can do a mill and overlay or something like that. But in order to use referendum money, it has to be enumerated out in the referendum. You can't just decide, well, we're going to use this money for the referendum, that was in the referendum, and that road wasn't on the referendum list that people voted on. So we're kind of here, caught here, but I think we kind of need to do pothole patrol, and please, use C Click Fix, help us. But again, if it doesn't stop raining, I don't know how we're going to fill them, because they're all full of water all the time. So be patient, but, you know, keep us informed and keep us, you know, on our toes on the potholes. And I'd also like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items A1 through A3, E, F, H, I, and J to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
G, you didn't say G.
I didn't say G.
Right, and G.
And we're going to have a correction, and G, because it's at the bottom, but not on the motion.
Motion to suspend the rules, move items A through, by Councilor Denny. Any discussion on the motion? Why not, by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Ten in favor, zero against? All set?
All set.
Councilor Ungary?
I just wanted to mention, I also attended the art festival that was at Enfield High, and the talent that's, these high school and elementary school students possess is just amazing. And they auctioned off many pieces of work, and I even tried to win some, and I didn't, but it was, I really appreciated that. I also wanted to announce that Rotary is having their largest fundraising event this Thursday night, April 18th, over at Isnuntuck, and it begins at 6:00, and they provide scholarships for our students at Enfield High and many other things in town. So if you'd like to attend that, it's at Isnuntuck at 6:00 this Thursday. Thanks.
Councilor Kiner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, I'm not taking advantage of the patience of this council, so this is the second time that I'll be talking tonight. And I'm not too sure if I need an answer tonight, or where I should be going with this, where we as a council should be going. The Journal Inquirer ran an article last Thursday about the license plate readers. And, you know, I've got a question about that.
You ready, Carl?
I can understand why the Enfield police would be using that. I've got no problem with that. As it relates to the data being sent to Vigilant Technologies, that I do have a problem with, and I don't know what the answer is. I was talking to Councilman Sparazza before the meeting, and he was trying to explain to me how the license plate readers work. But I really believe that there is a privacy issue that affects all of us in Enfield and wherever these license plate readers are used. I can understand where ICE might be using it, and I don't really want to get into a debate on whether ICE is good or bad. That's not why I'm talking here tonight. But my question is this, when Vigilant Technologies gets this data, let's suppose now, you got a license, my license plate is taken a picture of, and Vigilant Technologies has that license plate, what's to prevent them from using this for any other purpose? Geez, now I know that Mr. Kiner's been at Foxwoods Casino when he told his wife he was somewhere else. I don't know. But there's a potential, a serious potential for invasion of privacy, much in the same way as drug testing is also somewhat of an invasion of privacy, but we don't have to get into that tonight. And I don't know where we should be going with this, Mr. Town Manager, if we should be talking to Chief Fox. I mean, I want my fears alayed on this. I really, I can't stress enough how important a right we as citizens have in this country, the right to privacy. I think it's one of our most important rights, and I really believe that there's a potential for an abridgement of that right, and that bothers me. It's my understanding that, of all the police departments that utilize license plate readers, only 80 send the information to Vigilant Technologies. And maybe there's a reason for that. And as I said, Councilman Sparazza was trying to explain this to me, but my technological abilities are probably in the minus numbers, so I didn't quite understand it all. But I really think at some time in the near future, I think this council really needs to get a handle on this particular issue. Thank you.
Councilor Sparazza?
Okay, so the article in the JI that Mr. Kiner is referring to was something that was initiated by the ACLU, and they had concerns that this data was being shared with a federal law enforcement agency, in this case, Immigration and Customs. Enfield has license plates readers on two of our cars. What they're used for, and we've used them for over a decade, is as you're driving down to a call, say there's a bank robbery somewhere, the car's going in the opposite direction, those plates are photographed. When we get to the bank robbery, if we develop a suspect, and we're trying to place that suspect in the area, we can go back and say, this license plate was here at this time. So it's an investigative tool. The license plate reader does not tell the police who's driving the car. We don't know who's driving the car. We don't know if they're citizens or not. What we know is the car's stolen, the registration's stolen, so it's an investigative tool. Other police departments have this system, and we want to work in concert with our other police departments to solve crime, because our criminals don't stop at the town line. So if we have a suspect in Enfield, maybe Windsor Locks or Hartford had him at a bank, so we share that information, because we're law enforcement. We're local police. Enfield Police works with Hartford Police. When I was chief, and I know Chief Fox, I'm not speaking for him, we work with the state police. We work with the FBI, with the Secret Service, with ATF, DEA, and yes, ICE. ICE, so there's no misunderstanding, is a law enforcement agency. Their task with enforcing immigration laws, customs, they're looking for MS-13 gang members. So when they access that information, it's used for a law enforcement purpose. Now, Vigilant, the company there, I suppose it's no different than Facebook, right? Or they're not supposed to disclose your information outside. The agreement with them is that it's used for law enforcement purposes only. With respect to privacy, Mr. Kiner's absolutely correct. Your privacy is paramount in our country. The Fourth Amendment speaks to that. And what we use in the law is called an expectation of privacy. In your homes, you should have the highest expectation of privacy. In your car, you have what they call a diminished expectation of privacy, because you drive your car on a public highway. You park your car in a public parking lot. So the information where your car is, when you're out in the public, there's no privacy, it doesn't extend at that point, because you're in a public place. These aren't listening devices. They don't tell us, again, who the driver of the car is. It's used to solve crimes, to detect stolen license plates, stolen cars, that's all it's for. Frankly, police officers take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the state of Connecticut and the United States Constitution. And I don't know how in good conscience a police, you would ask a police chief or a police department to say, well, if you need help with counterfeit money, call the Secret Service, or we need the FBI to help us with a bank robbery, or we have a drug problem, call the federal DEA people. But if we have someone here, because maybe the tone in the country right now is focused on this, the last I checked, you can't be here illegally. Congress passed that law a long, long time ago, and if you let police chiefs pick and choose which of our laws we're going to enforce, you have chaos. So I personally think the LPR readers are a valuable tool. I don't think there's any invasion of privacy for the reasons I just spelled out, so.
Deputy Mayor Susak?
Carl, that was perfect. The only other thing I can add, we all carry this thing around, and if you don't think this thing doesn't report where you are, try driving around as the passenger in the car. This thing knows where you are 24/7. And if you shut it off, you're not going to get your maps, you're not going to get your information you want. So, but Carl, perfect.
Councilor Crisati, then Councilor Denny. Well, let's go ahead, Councilor Denny, go ahead.
Well, I think all of this started when 9/11 happened, and you had to give up something, and a little bit of, little bit of privacy. Nobody likes to go, raise your hand if you'd like to go to the airport and get frisked and whatever, okay? And so we gave in up something, because they call it terrorist, and they call it ISIS and et cetera and et cetera. So I think, as much as we would like all this great privacy, we have to give something up for security. And this is what we hire police departments to do, FBI, and et cetera. And so I'm in favor of readers, I always have been. You have to give something up, a little bit of something up for your privacy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Crisati?
Yeah, I agree with officers, I keep calling you chief. I agree with the chief, I agree with that. I think the license plate readers are very important, especially in police investigations. Getting off that subject, Thursday night at Enfield High School from 5:00 to 8:00, there's going to be a Spring Fest, and the Enfield Public Schools in conjunction with the Enfield Chamber of Commerce. They're going to have music, live entertainment, community businesses are going to be there. Should be a great event.
Anyone else? Councilor Bosco?
One more thing about the plate reader. I think, what was it, last week, someone shared some information that a murderer was driving a certain car, and it pinged here in Connecticut. So someone, Virginia, put something out, and they caught him in Connecticut, and that's why you have to share it. We don't want the criminals there. And, you know, the unregistered cars and everything else that goes along with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to item nine, Town Manager Report, the proposed.
Not yet.
Town adopted budget?
Well, first, I'll just respond to the Councilman Communications. Number one, we have the PAR report, a lot of good information, especially for a lot of work and information from the Finance Department that Rose assisted the director doing, so I would refer you to that. I'd also say to Joey that the sneakers have been liberated from the power lines.
I seen that the next day. Before I got to work.
And all of the inquiries about the various locations, about lineage and state, all of that is addressed in the PAR as well. Inquiries to the state on timing of the lights, looking at, you know, the striping in the streets, so all that's addressed in the PAR as well. I would also like to state that the new color copier has been installed and is at the library, for those who are interested in that. And I would say, in regard to Councilor Susak's talk about the roads and potholes, we will be having next meeting, May 6th, the special presentation from 6:00 to 7:00. Public Works will be giving us an entire outline on roads 2020 and going back to the beginning, where we were, where we are, where we want to go, and it will address all of those issues, and I think it will be very, very helpful to the council and our residents at home. All right? And if we lower the.
You don't want to go to the big seat?
No. As you know, and we're going to commence, but we did start the budget a little differently this year. We've been doing it at governance throughout the year to address billing issues and collection issues, and the elderly tax credit, adult daycare, to try and also bring in those that we contribute money to, the organizations in the town, so there wouldn't be a big push and you wouldn't be overwhelmed in the next couple of weeks. And to that end, at the last slide is going to be the schedule. We also consolidated it, that instead of doing it for four, or five, or six nights, when you've all worked all day and come home and do your chores, and then come here and have to start at, you know, 7:00 or 8:00 and end up at 11:00, we're going to do one Saturday to start with all the major departments. and end up at 11:00, we're going to do one Saturday to start with all the major departments. You'll have the budget book for the smaller ones, and then if a follow-up session is necessary, if you have questions on the other departments, we will do that. And likewise, on the deliberations, we're going to do a Saturday morning, again, starting at 8:30, go through the bulk of the day to early afternoon, so you can really deliberate together. That way, it isn't stinted, it isn't separated, you don't forget where you left off on one department or another. I think it gives it continuity, and I think everybody will be a little sharper doing it on a Saturday morning than, you know, 10:30, 11:00 on a Thursday or Friday night. So we'll see how that works. All right. Staff has worked very hard. We have done a lot. As I say, not only, I think we scrutinized all of the departments very, very carefully to come up with this budget. As you can see, the 2020 proposed budget is $66,308,755. The increase appears to be $3,485,322. Now, with a caveat, you're going to see 5.5%. And that looks, it's in line with what other communities are doing, but we're going to address that to show you exactly where that increase, what it is comprised of. The Board of Education, their budget this year is $71,630,274, and it's an increase of 0.48%. And I commend the board. We had a joint meeting, they presented that, and the superintendent did. And also, I'd like to point out to those at home, that it was a very difficult year last year. And $4 million, we left in the Board of Education budget, and they've repeatedly thanked the council for that, we did not touch it. And conversely, though, we had to make cuts, draconian cuts on the town side, which we've tried to restore some of those things to bring parity back to the town budget. So the total budget is $137,939,029. And that's a overall, between the board and the town, 2.85% increase. And you can see the breakout, that's 51.9% is the board, 48.1% is the town portion. All right. So I said it's an increase of 5.5%, which is equal to an increase of $3,485,322. What does that really mean? Well, it doesn't really mean that, because really, the mandatory increases are the lion share. The discretionary, we'll get to, is at the bottom of the screen. Last year, there were severe cuts in the police department, police officers and benefits. We cut from 88 sworn officers, excuse me, from 95, which had been, not the high, we at one point had 102 sworn offices, it was reduced, but last year's budget, when you went into it, had 95 sworn offices, which is what it should be. It was cut to 88 people. That was not something that could be sustainable, given the size of our town and all of the services the police deliver. So we restored that last year. So this is a continuation that we're going to keep level staffing of 95 sworn officers at the police department. That represents $1,212,220. So that's really, that's a mandatory increase. That's something that we had to carry over from last year, just to get back to where we were. The capital improvement plan, and we'll go into some detail about that, is $949,064. And we'll get into what that is composed of. But again, over the last couple of years, we very severely cut our capital improvement. We do that at our peril. It's for vehicles that we don't replace, so that we spend more on repairs. It's for projects that don't get done. And we have results, like on Orlando Drive, where we have a washout, and then we're dealing with those things on an emergency basis, instead of in a measured, planned way. Debt service, this is something that we can't avoid. This is for the bonds that were issued for the Enfield High School renovations and roads 2015. That's $158,638. Others, this is restoration as well. EMS was cut to the bone. It was unsustainable. As you know, we had a presentation earlier in the year. We had cut two EMTs and two paramedics. The staffing had equalized over the last several years, call volume to four ambulances being run, 11 paramedics, 11 EMTs, and we cut four, and by some math, maybe even more. The council appropriately and sagely restored those positions last year. We are, we are keeping that in this year's budget. What's interesting to note, we list at $255,293 for the EMS, for health premium increases, union increases in wages. That number is actually much, much, much higher. The 1029 union increases alone was 296. EMS staffing was 172. Health insurance, we had savings because of negotiations with contracts, so that was about 275,000. So with the savings, and then keeping what we had, the increase was kept at 255. So if you reduce those numbers that I call, you know, really the threshold, the floor, of mandatory things that are non-discretionary, it's really a 1.5% increase in discretionary spending for the entire budget, or 910,107. State revenues, the most important number is the bottom number. All of these, we're well familiar with. We needn't go into great detail, but it's the pilot. This is money we receive from the state in various forms, the largest portion of which is the ECS, the education, amount of over $29 million. The anticipated increase from the state this year is 0.8%. That's an increase over last year. That's the best estimate we have in the governor's budget. Unlike last year, it doesn't look like it will very much, but again, we're relying on what the estimate is, and that's the total revenues that we receive. This is the general fund overview, and if you look all the way to the right, I think that's what's the most important column. General government increase, 0.82%. That general government constitutes Town Manager, Town Clerk, Town Attorney, Human Resources, Finance. The biggest increases there, which were discretionary but necessary, were the new Assistant Town Manager, and the Safety Officer that we funded last year. The Safety Officer has started, we're very excited. I've talked to her, she'll be coming and doing a presentation, we'll be introducing her, but that's very important to keeping and looking at OSHA, and safety of our employees and residents. If you look at the next, again, we've covered it, Public Safety was a 9.61% increase. That is the increase of 88 sworn officers, to go back to the 95. Public Works actually had a decrease. That's basically because we did implement some of the savings for NOVAC, and also adjustments in the 1029 contract and savings in healthcare. Development Services, it looks like it's large, and it's 17.07%. And this is where we decided, and we have talked about concentrating, we need economic development, we need growth in this town. To do that, you need the staff. This area is the only area that I added positions. One is a ZEO land use technician to assist the zoning officer. We also made the zoning officer full-time from part-time last year. We have to be able to keep up with blight. We have to be able to ensure that people are following the plans, the planning and zoning and the ZBA, and inland wetlands attached to plans and approvals. And we haven't been doing that. We haven't had the personnel to do it. And we also need that staff there to go out and assist with new applications when people want to come in and expand in our town. To wait two, three, four months isn't acceptable, they go somewhere else. I think we've done a remarkable job in hiring in that department, Lori Witten as the director. We have Nelson Tericio, who has been doing a great job as the deputy director, to now be going out there and looking for funds, applying for grants, and trying to find the money for us. And you've seen some of those applications. Last week, one alone was $350,000 he applied for. We're applying for hundreds of thousands for the opera players. He's assisting Hazardville Institute, Look for Money, the Historical District. And we have to continue to buttress those efforts. Also in that amount, there is a additional in the building department, we're overwhelmed. We were up $300,000 in applications and permits and building. That's a good thing. But again, people want those things turned around quickly. They want to know we're business friendly. We had a part-time position we could not fill. Nobody will come without the benefits. This is a small increment to make it full-time. We already have people who are interested, and we need to fill that, to give them the resources to make sure that our building department is being run efficiently. And lastly, we have to do a new plan of conservation development next year. This funds for a consultant to do it. We've always done that in the past. And there's also money here for consultant services, for an update of our zoning regulations. They're badly needed. We've got to come up to the 2020, or 2012, I mean, the 2020 year in our regs. It's an impediment when people want to come, and the regulations don't make sense anymore. We're constantly going and making amendments. So this is going to be a thorough review, to bring those in line. Intergovernmental Agency, those are the costs that we pay for the Nurse Central Health District, Celebrations Account, Veterans Council, Cemetery, Capital Region of Governments, and CCM. And the last one is the catch-all non-departmental. That's for our liability and other insurances, our pension retirement funding for social services, and other funds in debt. Continuing, Social Services had a 4% increase, and a lot of that's kind of for the grant money. You've seen that we've had increase, actually, grant money has been increased. We actually have some transfers this evening. Information Technology, 12.2%. We've consolidated and streamlined. That really isn't an increase to them. We've just taken all of IT services from all the other departments and put them under IT for efficiency, and for economies, and for accountability. And that, that is really a consistent number, but it has increased their budget by that much. Emergency Medical Services, as we said, 4.9%, primarily the reinstitution of those positions. Insurance Reserve, that's something we're continuing to do, so we don't have the issue and the problem we had a few years ago about not having enough money in our insurance fund. Library Recreation, a slight increase. Again, they needed in Recreation, somebody additionally to go from part-time to full-time, because the way we reorganized, one person is out of that office. We do generate a lot of funds, and it will cover that. And there are a couple of other interesting things. I'll let the director present in his budget that are innovative, and we funded them, and they're really a small amount. Dog Fund was zero. All right, this is just, I think, a helpful pie chart, just to show you really, where does the general fund revenue break down? And as you can see, the lion's share of how we raised it $100 million is from property and motor vehicle taxes, that's 74%. The intergovernment revenues are the ones we talked about earlier, that we receive, 24%. And then charges for services, our investment income, fines and forfeitures, license and permits make up the difference for the combined total of $135 million plus. This is the capital improvement program. Now, in the last couple of years, we had to cut it back, and I think, you know, we were really cutting bone now, and muscle. We've tried to get back to a couple of things. We've tried to get back online with the vehicle replacement program that was adopted a few years ago, and also, and I'll go through these. That accounts now, the vehicle replacement program, for heavy-duty trucks, light-duty trucks, and police cruisers. And that'll be broken down. And there's lease packages for that. If you look at Public Works Equipment, that is for replacement of mowers and some snow blowers. School Facilities, that's, there's $50,000 for roof repairs. Next year's Henry Barnard is $580,000. The next phase is there. There's restriping of the track at Enfield High, and there's $150,000 going into the Board of Ed Syncing Fund. Refuse and Resource Management, this is for the containment and disposal of street sweepings. Town Building Repairs, this is pretty much traditional. It's $100,000 for general repairs to town buildings. Put in additional $25,000 for roof repairs. $75,000 going towards, we have to replace the underground fuel tank at the PD, we're going to do it over three years. We need a vehicle exhaust system at DPW, which is $45,000. And then there was provisions for a waste oil furnace and monitor of about 17. Again, that will be broken down and presented to you for CIP, but that's for illustrative purposes, to see kind of what it is. Town Road, paving and miscellaneous, again, this will be addressed in the Roads Project, but this is for ongoing repairs throughout the town, in conjunction with Road 2015. There's $500,000 towards that project. $100,000 for a crack seal program, as you well know, we need it. We have to do many, many, many sign replacements, they don't reflect at night, so it's a bigger number, but $35,000. Again, we're phasing that in over a few years. And $150,000 is going into the Town Infrastructure Syncing Fund. And lastly, we just list other projects, and some of those are Protective Shades at the Child Development Center, Secure Blinds. We're going to continue our commitment to the Joint Operations Center for Cameras with the Police. $100,000 is going into that fund. They need a new cell block intercom system for officer safety. It's the original one, and it's barely audible, that's $30,000. And we're also replacing patrol, the rifles that Crest uses, they're now obsolete and have to be updated for that program. So again, our commitment is to put back in, and if we don't do it now, and we don't get back on the routine and the program that we had, it's going to cost us much more later. So I think what people and folks at home, and you really want to know, what does this, what does this really mean in regard to the mil rate? And we can see the historical mil rate last year, it was raised 1.9 to 33.4. This year, all said and done, it's a 1 mil increase to 34.4. And this is what it means. You all understand that a mil, 1 mil increase of 34.4, we used the numbers on the most average sales of homes in Enfield, about 178,000 to 189,000. But as you know, we only taxed 70% of market value for the property. The average, we went to 200,000 as an average home, didn't go below that, went a little higher. So the property taxes on that home would be, or are, $4,816. And an increase of 1 mil would be $140 this year, on the average home of $200,000. Where do the numbers go? We thought this would be helpful, just to show a breakdown to our citizens and residents. 52% Enfield Schools. And then we broke it down, Public Works, 12. Public Safety, 10%. The transfers, we've talked about, and you can see Recreation, the Senior Center. General Government, which is that part of the government that had a 2% increase. Then our debt service, the pensions and benefits, Development Services, we discussed. And then our utilities, non-building, and streetlights, et cetera, 1%. And other, there's some miscellaneous. That's the breakdown of your tax dollars. This is our timetable. Today, we're doing the proposed submittal to the council. We'll have a community conversation for the folks at home to come and talk about this, and we'll do the presentation, April 24th, at Henry Barnard, at 7:00 PM. Then we'll do the presentation I mentioned before, of all the department directors coming in from the major departments on Saturday, April 27th. We'll start at 8:30, and we'll have a list of the schedule for you. May 1st, we have the public hearing, 7:00 PM at the Enfield High School. And council will deliberate May 11th, Saturday morning, again, 8:30, and follow up as necessary, and we need to adopt the budget no later than the May 20th meeting. And it becomes effective July 1st. Again, we've tried to be reasonable, we've tried to balance, we've tried to get back, we've implemented what NOVAC recommended in Public Works, at Water Pollution Control. We've got back to the vehicle replacement program, and I think it's, it's an investment in the community. And it's at a cost that we have to recognize, that we do have those, that bottom ceiling with the increases that we really have no control over. And that's the presentation. Now, we're trying to separate it out, Water Pollution Control from the town side. This is very simple, and it can be adopted and discussed separately. The Water Pollution Control, as you know, we're trying to operate it as a business. Woodard and Kern made recommendations a few years ago. As you can see, 2019, the budget for Water Pollution Control was $6,148,114. This year, it has dropped by 10% to $5,490,176. So it's a reduction of $657,000, mostly in capital, but also there were recommendations for positions in Water Pollution Control, that I recommend we hold off on until we have a new superintendent, till the plan is complete, and we really see what our needs are there at that time. Now, this is separate. We've said, and we had all the presentations, the most recent one done by Woodard and Kern back in October. We never fully implemented either the sewer usage or the monthly fee, as they recommended. So we're trying to balance it this year. Remember, what we're trying to do is be self-sufficient. We're trying to repay the general fund. We borrowed, we had almost a $5 million debt, which we've cut in half. We owe about $2.5 million, and we want to have an emergency rainy day fund there. So for all intents and purposes, what we're, what we're looking at is the second line down, the volumetric rate. Last year was 339. We're recommending it go to 349, to be more in line with what Woodard and Kern, we didn't do it last year, and we've got to get back on that program, or we're going to have a big shortfall in the years to come. And then the cost per quarter of that, the increase you can see, is, right now, it's $43.32 a quarter. It will increase to $44.60. So the annual total cost, the ready-to-serve charges, you can see, is 21 last year, and it's going to be increased to 36. This is because we were at, they recommended 10, we did seven, so we're behind by $3. And to get back on track for what they recommended for next year, it would be 12. But the bottom line that people at home, and what you really want to know, is this is the difference of the total annual cost, from FY19 to FY20, so it's an increase of $65 per year, or 16.28 per quarter. That is the total difference to the residents, and it keeps us back being solvent and addressing all of the needs operationally at the plant. And again, that will be discussed further when we have our deliberations, and when we do the presentation by DPW. And I can tell you, the plan itself is on schedule. We'll have updates. We'll have updates, 20% completed, and it should be completed hopefully on schedule by October of next year.
Any questions?
Chris, I want to thank you and the department heads in the town and the town employees because the three of you together make that budget happen. Our employees this year, almost all of them are taking a 0% increase in wages. As a department head, it's not easy when you have programs that you know are valuable, but you have to make the cuts. Those are hard decisions. And I especially want to thank you, even though I wasn't on the council, your early foresight back in October and November, starting to bring these issues before the council because I remember years where they would be down there at 10 or 11 o'clock at night at the last minute trying to decide. So I thank you for all that. Specifically though, I just have one question. It's on the vehicle replacement cost for the police cruisers. When the officers work extra jobs, they're paid by the outside vendor, we charge a fee for that car and there's a fund built up. Number one, are we going to use some of those funds to offset the budget increase? And number two, are we looking, are we charging appropriately for the use of our cars compared to other towns?
Well, I guess you can tell we worked together for 10 years over there because I have looked at those issues. This year, the package for the leasing for the police department is 10 vehicles. And the cost of that would be actually, it breaks out, all of those vehicles are on average to be fully outfitted with cages and radios, about $50,000. One is a K-9 vehicle at 60. So it's about $600,000. But the vehicle lease package will be 193. That's the cost of it over the years that we will pay for those 10 vehicles. Included in that, we also looked at that average, what are we charging for our vehicle when we do outside jobs? We're charging $20 an hour. The chief has gotten me a lot of the surrounding towns, may have to be adjusted, but to your point, several years ago, we did do a designated fund. Currently, there's $300,000 in that fund, of which we will be using 193 for that specific purpose of replacing those vehicles. So it's another improvement that a prior council made that worked. We had the money to fund for those cruisers because we're charging outside contractors and when we go to other towns, $20 an hour for the cruiser. In addition, the officers make their rate and I'm looking at that. I think it's probably in line, Carl, but it may be a little low. It depends because a lot of the communities just do a flat rate for the officer and the vehicle. So we're trying to break it out to look again for next year, but it looks to be in the ballpark.
And the last thing, Chris, is, and it's probably the furthest thing from all our minds, I'm worried about next year. I keep hearing from our state senators, from our representatives in the paper, state of Connecticut next year is looking at a $2 billion deficit. Unless something changes between now and then, I don't know how municipality aid won't be cut for next fiscal year. I know it's, we didn't finish this one yet and I'm on the next one, but I think that some of the moves in this particular budget position us well with getting ready for that, what might be coming in a year. Would you agree with that? I mean...
Yes, we're very conscious of it. I mean, it's there, whether he decides to raise taxes on everybody or go to designated cuts. I think Governor Malloy tried both and later in his term, he actually cut aid. So I think we have to be prepared. So we tried to keep this skinny as best we could so we don't have to include things this year that we will cut next year. But mindful that we do have to make the investment in our capital this year because we've deferred it for a little too long. So yes, we're cognizant of that and hopefully our economy will do better in Connecticut and the federal government and we'll see next year.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Mayor Susak.
Okay. The most complained about bill is the sewer. Comes four times a year. And now we're looking, it goes from, if I read it right, $21 for the ready-to-use fee to 36 a quarter. Can we do, I know I hate to ask this question because people are going to want to shoot me, but I think we need to look at a flat rate where we get rid of, you know, having to pay the water company to supply us bills. We get rid of a billing system and it goes on as a line item, just like the fire goes on as a line item, right on our tax bill. And it's a once a year. We think we need to take it into payments. We would do that. But we're at the point where, you know, it looks, it pretty much looks like what all the other communities that have a flat rate are. And I think we're just, we're torturing ourselves and we're torturing everybody else. I mean, we've got deduct meters, we've got more stuff going for our sewer bill. I mean, we've overanalyzed and overdone what we're doing and I think it eventually costs us money to just do these things. So for me, I think you're right on the money, what we need to increase it. I, you know, sat through all those meetings. I don't know if you want to reconvene the facility part of the sewer and make us sit there for extra meetings, but I think we need to look at a flat rate and somehow we get that. You know, if it's by bedroom or whatever it is, it is and people need to make that decision.
And we're very sensitive to that because I understand that you and Cray that came up when there was the last increase and here it is again. Unfortunately, that is in the plan submitted and I don't want to divert from it. It'd be easier for me to do it, put my head in the sand, but that's not responsible. But I think as Woodard and Kern said, we should bring them back now. And you may adjust this, you may say, look, we're going to back off from that, but let's reconvene it. Let's bring Woodard and Kern because they did give us options in October about just that, flat rate or other options that we may want to now look at for next year.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I probably wasn't paying attention, but did our grant list increase?
Yes.
By what percentage?
Oh, I know. John, what was the total? It was 29 million.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
Yes. And we're hopeful with the way building permits have been issued in this last quarter, we're ahead of where we were last year. Hopefully, it'll be better next year.
So I just want to make, thank you very much for the presentation. We have enough flexibility when we deliberate, though. I want to make sure if we have to the 20th, just in case we don't come to an agreement on the 11th, I want to make sure there's flexibility in that week where we can meet.
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll talk before then. We can put in a few dates, but I know we can usually get a consensus and at most you need one, maybe two. And that's why we did it when we did it, so you'd have that flexibility in case you need it to meet again.
I know you provided, what was the amount, what's the collection rate we assumed in our revenues for this budget?
Collection rate for which?
98 or 99, what's the percent? 98%?
98%.
98?
And you see on the agenda tonight, we are going out to the law firm to sign the agreement to have them do collections.
We'll go through, in the past, we've used some of fund balance to front, you know, sort of the budget and pay it back after, has that been done in this budget or not?
John?
That's done pretty much every year, so it was consistent. I think it was...
So we'll go through that, right?
2.1 million.
2.1, right.
Right.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Tina, sorry.
Unless I missed it, did we get a copy of that presentation?
We have handouts, but I think they took them all. It is going to be loaded. We can send it to you tomorrow.
If you can just email it to us, that'd be good.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10, Town Attorney Report.
Good evening, everyone. No formal report tonight.
Any questions for the Town Attorney? Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
Item 11, Reporter's Special Committee, sending reports. Counselor Mueller.
Quick update on JFK Billing Committee. The JCJ hit the ground running. They're meeting with user groups this week. Some of the user groups are department heads and they gather their data and go from there. Thank you.
Do we, just a question maybe through you to Chris. So we have a signed contract with an architect. We have a building, or I'm sorry, what is it called? A building?
Owner rep.
Owner rep. So has that been communicated? So we met, in theory, the artificial April 1st deadline that the governor threw out there?
Yes.
So we're good?
I...
Knock on wood.
Yeah, I mean, we met our deadline and the building committee did and Randy Daigle handled the transmittal to the state, so...
Yeah, I just want to thank Randy Daigle and the team for meeting the deadline. So we took it seriously. Thank you. Any other reports? Hearing none. Moving on to item 12, Old Business. Page 1, Appointments A 1 and 2, we have none. On page 2, 3 through 16, we have none. Top of page 3, Item 17, we have none. Moving on to B in Old Business, Appointments by the Town Manager, 1 through 13 on page 3, none. Moving on to page 4, Item number 14, again, we have none for the Town Manager. Item C, there's no appointments for P&amp;Z Commission appointed by the council. Item D, Discussion on Nutmeg Solar, any, no, still no update on Nutmeg, stays on the table. E, Discussion on School Roof, Item E, Discussion School Roof of Replacements, again, stays on the table for now. Item 13, New Business, we have A, No Consent Agenda, B, No Appointments by the Town Council, C, No Appointments by the Town Manager, and D, No Appointments, P&amp;Z Commission Appointed, Council Approved. Item 14, Items for Discussion, Items A 1, 2, and 3 have been moved to miscellaneous. Item B, Town Council Appointments, Item 1, 2, 3, and 4, we have none, at least at this point. I think we'll wait till next meeting. Item C, There's No Town Council Manager, excuse me, Town Manager Appointments under Items for Discussion. Item D, No Appointments for P&amp;Z Appointed, Council Approved. Items EF, G, H, I, and J have already been moved to miscellaneous. Okay. Sorry, folks, I should be always more prepared. Item A, Consent Agenda and the Miscellaneous, Items A 1, 2, and 3, Transfer of Funds for 7405, Transfer of Fund for $1,000, and Transfer of Funds for $2,800. There are a motion to approve the Consent Agenda by Deputy Mayor Susak, seconded by Counselor Crisati. Real quick, Chris, these are just...
Yeah, Don is here, but basically the first one is Transfer for Congress Living Meal Program. It was a $34,000 grant. We actually received an additional $7,405. The second is a request for the Enfield Child Development Center certifications. We need to be certified in giving medications and use of the EpiPen. And the last, the Request for Transfer for Family Resources, a grant for grandparents' support group, and basically it also gives camp scholarships through that.
That's for grandparents who actually are raising their grandkids. Hearing no discussion by, show hands, all those approved of the Consent Agenda. Oppose any abstentions. We have 10 in favor and 0 against. Moving under Item E, under Miscellaneous, Request for Transfer of Funds for the Enfield Development Center of $20,000, excuse me, yeah, $20,000. Resolved in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. To Enfield Child Development Center, food-related items of $20,000 from the Enfield Child Development Center, line item, other revenue of $20,000. Certified that the above stated funds are available as of April 15, 2019 by John Wilcox, the Director of Finance, and approved by Chris Bronson, the Town Manager, by Counselor Mueller, by Counselor Sikala. Anything, Chris, on this or...
Again, Don's here, but this is basically a transfer that we do meals at the ECDC for the Board of Education and this is a transfer to cover the $20,000 for that purpose.
Any questions? Any need to bring Don up? Say you're off the hook. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Davis?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sparazza?
Four.
Counselor Susak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
10 in favor, not against?
Moving on to Item F of the miscellaneous resolution setting a public hearing on amending the Enfield Town Code, Chapter 46, Historic Preservation, Section 46-83. Whereas the Historic District Commission wishes to amend Chapter 46, Historic Preservation, Section 46-83 to update necessary language and provide for the installation of renewable resources. And whereas the Enfield Town Council wishes to seek input in these amendments from the public, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council does hereby schedule a public hearing to be held on May 6, 2019 at 6:50 PM in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, in order to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the amendment of the Enfield Town Code, Chapter 46, Historic Preservation, Section 46-83, prepared on March 29, 2019 by the Town Manager's Office, by Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crisati. It's simply just set in a public hearing.
Right. And we've attached the amendments. Raquel, our assistant planners here, but just in case, but we can do the presentation on the actual changes at the public hearing in the beginning like we normally do. And it's attached for people to see what they are.
I just have one question.
Counselor Denny?
And I left you a note a couple of days ago or maybe a week ago about that sign when I seen historical preservation on Route 5 and the entrance to Hazard Avenue.
Yeah, I don't know if we've gotten an update from them on it. It's rather...
But you did have the note and you're not, I just, when I saw historical, it just rang a bell that that sign is a mess. Thank you.
I'm good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sparazza?
Four.
Counselor Susak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
10 in favor, not against?
Moving on to Item G, Under Miscellaneous, Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter in a Contract with Rossi Law. We're resolved that the Town Manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to enter in an agreement in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with Rossi Law Offices, LTD, subject to review by the approval of the Town Attorney, submitted on April 1, 2019 by Della Fromont Cesser and Supervisor of Cess and Revenue Collection, by Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crisati. This is in what we started, I think, back in the late fall of last year where we were sending, I mean, historical collections for motor vehicle specifically, correct?
Correct.
Where past due balances, we're going to start going after.
Correct.
And I think if, I know that within the par, the remaining highest, as a percentage now, I'm saying, of uncollected taxes remains on the motor vehicle.
Correct. Mr. Wilcox nods in the affirmative.
So that's why we're choosing as a council to select to go after this because, again, it's the highest percentage as opposed to uncollected taxes.
Yes.
If you have anything else to add, I just want to make sure because we've been working on this for a while.
No, it's, again, we started working this a while ago so we could be proactive on it. And also, we'll have an update to on EMS. We did an updated program.
Right.
And that should have been implemented. We'll get back from our company to make sure that that's been implemented as well. But we gave authority and authorized the letter, so we are trying to be a little more aggressive in collecting what we're owed.
Perfect. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Bosco?
Will we be able to use this law firm for business property tax too?
I have to defer to John because some of these are specialties, so he's the expert in this if he wants to give an answer.
I'm not sure whether they even specialize in that. They specialize in motor vehicle, but I'm not sure on the business personal property. We typically go with the State Marshals for...
Any further questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sfaraza?
Four.
Counselor Susak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
10 in favor, not against?
Moving on to Item H, Under Miscellaneous, Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Apply for a Grant and Enter in Agreement with LEGO Community Fund. Whereas LEGO Community Fund US provides funding to the Family Resource Center, and whereas the Family Resource Center is in the process of submitting a grant application to LEGO Community Fund US for funds that will be available to the town in fiscal year 2019, 2020, resolved that the Town Manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign and submit the grant application and enter in an agreement in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with LEGO Community Fund US, subject to review by the approval of the Town Attorney, submitted on April 15, 2019 by Don Homer Boothier, the Director of Social Services, by Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Denny.
Just briefly, the Family Resource Center was invited to apply for this LEGO grant, and the funds would be used to support the Stowe Family Resource Center's two parent educators and other program expenses related thereto.
We have a dollar amount, Chris? Dawn?
$50,000.
We currently receive this, correct?
We've been receiving funds from LEGO for Stowe since 2011.
Right.
Yep.
And a very, very good corporate partner. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sfaraza?
Four.
Counselor Susak?
Four.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
9 in favor, not against?
Moving on to Item I, Discussion Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Apply for a Grant and Enter in Agreement with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Whereas funding would support the Enfield Dial-A-Ride Program that transports seniors and persons with disabilities throughout the Town of Enfield. Whereas Enfield Dial-A-Ride is in the process of completing a grant application for submission to the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for funds that will be available to the town in fiscal year 2019, 2020, resolved that Town Manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign and submit a grant application, enter into a contract in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, subject, and to, subject to the review and approval of the Town Attorney, again, submitted on April 15, 2019 by Don Homer Boothier, the Director of Social Services, by Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crisati. So much straightforward. Anyone have any questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sfaraza?
Four.
Counselor Susak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
10 in favor, not against?
Moving on to Item J, Under Miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter into a Memorandum of Understanding with the Enfield Public Schools for Youth Mental Health and Wellness Advisory Council. Whereas the Town Council approved the establishment for Youth Mental Health and Wellness Advisory Council's effective on July 1, 2019, whereas the Youth Mental Health and Wellness Advisory Council will be a partnership between the Youth and Family Services Division of DSS and the Enfield Public Schools, resolved that Town Manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign a memorandum of understanding, subject to review and approval by the Town Attorney, in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield, submitted on April 15, 2019 by Don Homer Boothier, the Director of Social Services, by Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Ungary.
We previously discussed, and the council authorized this to be the successor agency to the Suicide Prevention Advisory Group, and this is the memo of understanding that they put together and Legos looked at.
Any questions? Counselor Sfaraza?
Just a clarification, Chris. If you're, in the resolution, it says that the cost of this council will be funded at the current level, which is $40,000. That's not changed from, that's what they need for this year. We're not talking about...
That's what level funding has been.
For the past several years. And that, you're comfortable with that number?
They are, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sfaraza?
Four.
Counselor Susak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
10 in favor, not against?
Okay, moving on, sorry, I lost my place. Moving on to Item 16, Public Communications. Would anyone like to speak for the public, I mean, council this time? Roberta, then Mary Ann. Three minutes, sorry, at this time? Again, we ask folks to respectfully refrain from personalities.
Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. A couple things. To the Town Manager, maybe that you can answer after, but I believe with the registrations from, that are on the back of the police cars, don't they just grab the people who aren't registered? It's like, people like me, who pays my taxes, and I'm a registered vehicle, I'm probably, they're not going to even ping me, let alone who may be driving my car. Just want to remind everybody, the tax form is tomorrow at, at the JFK Middle School at 6 o'clock, so if you have something to say about the, I'm sorry, the toll form, I've got my notes wrong. The toll form is tomorrow at JFK, so if you have some comments about the tolls that are being proposed, this is your opportunity to come in and speak about them. I, I know that a lot of people in Enfield and the surrounding area are opposed to the tolls. Come by and have a couple of words. Congratulations to the town. I read in the documents tonight that your tax collections went from 98.51%, 98.51% to Woo-hoo! You can't, I'm telling you, 100% is in sight. Nice work, Chris. And then this is to the mayor to ask Joey about, don't we have a pothole machine? Could someone just remind me? Because how that gets...
A patch machine.
Okay, well, I'm not asking you to talk to me. Tell me later. And then, just one last thing to remind everybody, we have the Clean Sweep on Saturday. It starts at 10:30. We start here, we step off at the Town Hall. I know that there's a big crew coming with me, so come on by, bring your gloves, a plastic bag, and your clippers are planning on bending over, and you can pick up trash all over town and make the place a beautiful place.
Thank you. Roberta.
I just press this little red button.
You got it.
My name is Roberta Lad, and I live at 10 Carlisle Street in Enfield. I'm back because I just learned tonight that I could tell you more about beautification's budget in an attempt to have you improve our budget. First of all, I would, we fund many, the purchase of, of many of the flowers that the garden club talked about tonight. We fund, we, they plant them, they design and maintain the garden, nothing to take away from them, but we fund the purchase of those flowers. That's pretty, that's a lot of money. The, the net, next, we sponsor and fund, thank you, Mary Ann, the Clean Sweep program.[1506.01]